Thank you very much Pastor Rutherford. And if everyone could just give me a big round of applause for the pastor and the whole congregation. For opening up their doors to us this evening and being so hospitable, we really appreciate it. And, you know, as the pastor said, my name is Robert Glassman and I am an attorney with the law firm of Canishe Boyle in Los Angeles here. And on behalf of our entire legal team, I would like to welcome you to this very important town hall meeting that we are having here at the Shepherd of the Hills importer range. As you all probably know, the Southern California Gas Company indicated that for the very first time on October 23rd of this year, there was a gas leak, at least that's what they're calling it, up in Liso Canyon up the street. And here we are, two months later, and they haven't done anything about it. They haven't fixed the leak, they haven't stopped it, and they have indicated to us, and to you, that it's not going to be until several months from now until they do anything about it. Well, what we say to that is that they have failed you. They have failed every single person in your community. And, you know, that's why we're here. That's why we're here, okay? Because every time they send an email out to you, every time they make a post on social media or make a statement in the press about how this gas isn't dangerous, is not toxic to you, to your children, to your parents, to your pets, well, that's a slap in the face. And that's why we're here. We're here to fight for you. That's what our job is. And just like in every big major legal battle, there's various areas that we need to explore and talk about. And that's the point of this evening. Because tonight, we're going to hear from a number of experts in different disciplines. We're going to offer different perspectives about this situation facing your community. And what I'd like to do now is I'd like to introduce you to the people you're going to be hearing from. First, you're going to be hearing from Rex Paris. Rex is an attorney and founding partner at the law firm of RX Paris in Lancaster. Rex is widely considered one of the most innovative and successful trial lawyers in this state and in the country. And he's going to talk to us a little bit about the litigation strategy, about the cases that we've already filed and that we're going to file, and what some of our legal claims are. Then you're going to hear from a panel of medical experts, and I'm going to kind of go through the line here. You're going to hear from Dr. Ronald Fisk. Dr. Fisk, Dr. Fisk, why don't we stand up? Dr. Fisk is a neurologist at Cedar Sinai Hospital in Los Angeles. Next, we have Dr. Anthony Redding. Dr. Redding is a clinical psychologist and a professor at the UCLA School of Medicine. Thank you, Dr. Redding. Next, we have another attorney, Patricia Oliver. She's going to be talking to you a little bit about relocation, that's a big issue facing the community. And she's going to bring up some people who have just gone through the process, the Katz family, and she's going to talk to you about that. It's a really horrible situation. It's a really horrible situation right now during the holidays, and so she's going to talk to you about what we're going to help our clients in that regard. Next, we have Dr. Richard King. And Dr. King, he's a pediatrician. He practices critical care medicine for children. And, you know, we know this exposure to the gas is very dangerous to our children out there, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about that. Next, who do we have next to you, Dr. King? Okay, we've got Dr. Brooks Michaels. Dr. Michaels? Dr. Michaels practices family medicine and specifically geriatrics, so he's going to talk to you a little bit about that. And he's going to offer some perspectives about some of our elderly people and how we can avoid problems going forward. And finally, we have the veterinarian, Dr. David Smith. And Dr. Smith, you're going to talk to us about our pets, right? Okay. Because as we've heard from you, this is affecting our pets too, not just our children, not just our families. So he's going to talk to you a little bit about that. So, why don't we go ahead and get started and hear from Rex? Why don't you take it away?
Good evening. So, you've all heard different things about how the lawsuits are being filed, who's filing them, and it has to be incredibly confusing. I recognize that, you know, every lawyer in the country is knocking on your door. That's regrettable, but to be expected, I think. What I'm attempting to do tonight is to just give you the raw information. And so let me tell you what's happened so far. The first thing we did is we filed a lawsuit, and it's called a class action, and everybody's been told about that and confused by that. So I want to clarify what that is. One of the things we want to accomplish is to have them stop doing this, to have them stop poisoning your community. The way to do that, I thought that the best way to do that, the most efficient way, was to file the class action. And the goal of that is to stop it so we're not here two years from now with the next well blown. That's the reason that's filed. That has nothing to do with your individual claims. So, don't be confused by that. The class action is not protecting you for your individual claims. A problem that we've run into is the state's liability for this. That field, along with several other fields, have not been regulated according to the law. There's not any question about that. They can't deny it, because a month before this well blew, a report came out that said 76% of every injection well in Los Angeles County was permitted illegally. That's their report, that's not our report. 76% of every one of these wells was done illegally. So when we asked the state to give us every, every type of gas escaping from that well, and where it's going, and where they're monitoring, what did they do? Now remember, the law requires them to do that. That's not, we're not asking for something we're not entitled to. The law says that information has to be available to you. They lawyered up, and that's what that letter is. They're not giving it to us. They lawyered up. And I can understand why they did. I can understand why they did. Crimes have been committed, make no mistake about that. So, next week, we will go to court, and we will ask the judge to compel them to tell us what gases you are breathing, and what gases your children are breathing. We shouldn't have to do that, but that's what we're going to do, that's the next step in the litigation. And then we come to the individual claims. There are thousands of people in this community that are affected. If you own property in the community, your property values are going to be affected. There's nothing anybody can do about that. You will suffer a loss if you do not file a lawsuit and get compensated for it. But I want to talk to you about the people who are having health claims. It is critically important that if you are having health problems, that you get treated. It's also critically important that if you're not, don't. This litigation should be comprised of people who can, with absolute sincerity, say what problems they're having. It should not be populated by anybody who did not have physical symptoms. If you haven't had it, don't claim it. It's, you know, the symbol is that, that's what our mom told us when we were growing up. Let's keep it that way throughout the litigation. We are now in the process of filing with the court each one of those individual claims. And you want to understand the enormity of the cost here. Just to file the complaints, it's 430-some dollars. Multiply that by 2,000. We're looking at a million dollars, almost a million dollars, just to file the complaints. Why is that, of course, important to you? You want to be very careful that the people who are representing you have the ability to represent you. That's why I put four firms together. Not one of us had the ability to do it by ourselves. Did I do that? There we go. 435 dollars to file this. And that is just the beginning. By the time this litigation is done, it's going to be seven, eight million dollars in fees, experts, investigation, court costs. It's incredibly expensive. That's why you need a group that can sustain that type of effort. So, what's next? After we get it all filed, they'll start doing depositions where people come in under oath, they ask you questions, they ask the experts questions, and more importantly, we get to ask them questions. And they have to answer us. And we will find out exactly, exactly what happened up there, how long it's been happening, and what were the gases that have been seeping into this community for the last 10 years. This is not a two-month problem. What we've discovered is this has been ongoing for a long time. This was just a major blowout. That's why everybody's here today. It's the most massive oil gas, I mean, gas blowout, gas well blowout, in a populated area in history. This has never happened before in a populated area. And so when they tell you that it's not damaging, it's just temporary, every nonsense they're feeding you, understand, nobody knows. It's never happened before. If you're having symptoms, make sure you get treated. Make sure you go to your doctors, find out what's going on, and what we should do to lessen the impact. The people that are most at risk are people my age. You know, it's really hard for me to say that. People over 60. We're the most vulnerable population. People with health conditions, people with any type of chronic disease. This can be deadly. Make sure you're getting treated. The other at-risk population is our children. You know, they're developing. Nobody knows what breathing this stuff constantly is doing to them. And let me tell you what the defense is. How many people here have been reading the newspaper, watching the television, as the gas company says, "This is just the smell you're reacting to. It's just temporary, it's not a problem, it's not serious"? How many have heard that? Now, these people aren't stupid. How could her possibly, how could somebody possibly say that? We have children whose noses are bleeding every day, we have people who suffer from chronic headaches every single day, we have people that are nauseous every single day. How does that not become a serious issue? So why are they saying something nobody here believes? It's, they're building the defense. They know the lawsuit is coming, and they're trying to convince everybody that it's all in our heads. It's a trick. It's a trick invented by lawyers. Make no mistake, that's what is happening, and that's why you must document everything. Every dime this has cost you, write it down. Put it in a spreadsheet if you do Excel. Every dime, we do not want to cover one cent that you're not entitled to. But we want to recover every cent they took from you. That's what's called fairness. And we want this thing to be fair. If you don't document it, it's going to be extraordinarily difficult to do that. So write it down. And when the dust settles, when it's, hopefully, they have closed that facility. We are attempting to do that through the litigation process, but we also have to do it through the political process. I mean, come on, folks, you have a gas storage facility that we know the wells will blow where people live? That's insanity. We all know that's insanity. It's time our leaders recognize its insanity and then close it. But when the dust settles, we will do appraisals of everybody's property, and we will know exactly what it has cost in regards to the diminishment in value of your property. And that we will recover along with everything else. So there it is. That's where we are, that's where we're going. Hopefully, it will be quick, and rarely is. Thank you.
Before we just get going on with the medical experts, I have the privilege of introducing you to our fearless leader of our legal team, Mr. Robert F. Kennedy Judah. You are going to hear from Mr. Kennedy at the end of our presentation. He's going to wrap things up for us, and he's going to share with you some of his insights and perspectives about this environmental crisis that's facing your community, about the ongoing gas flow, and about these wells that are up there on Liso Canyon, okay? So we're excited to hear from him. Before we get going with Dr. Fisk, I just want to call up here to this microphone, I don't know where he is right now, but Dante Acosta, Mr. Acosta, oh, here he is, Mr. Acosta is a field representative for Congressman Steve Knight. Dante.
Thank you very much. I just want to take a moment on behalf of Congressman Steve Knight to let you all know that he's here, for me, and through Wyatt Woods and our other field representative. Actually, he's in DC, they're still voting, they have a vote tomorrow, and he'll be coming back to the district. We've had a lot of meetings on this issue, even though it is a, from a regulatory standpoint, it is a California state issue, and a local issue with county, et cetera. I want to let you know that Congressman Knight is very engaged in this process. We've had multiple meetings this week, we've met with county fire, we've met with health department officials, we've met with the company, et cetera. And Congressman Knight is closely monitoring this issue, and just want to let you know that he is concerned and he is aware of the issue, and he's not, you know, out there in DC forgetting about his constituents here back here in California. He will be back in the district tomorrow, as he is every weekend, and we'll be giving a full, comprehensive update. So I want to take a moment to say that to you. Thank you very much for coming on, Tony.
Dante, all right. Lee, can we put on Dr. Fisk's presentation here? And please, gentlemen, you're going to hear from Dr. Fisk. Like I said, Dr. Fisk is a neurologist at Cedar Sinai Hospital in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening. A neurologist does a lot of things, one of which is, you get to talk to good people like you, help explain complicated problems. And we are into in your area of complicated problems, which I'm going to try to simplify to some extent, but just to some extent. You'll see in a minute or two that I'm going to demonstrate to you, reveal to you that there are ways to approach the health problems generated by these toxic environments. There are a array of symptoms. The brain, the spinal cord and nerves are the ones that I'm going to focus on, but nevertheless, they interplay with the functionality of the entire human being. So, it's that thematic of medicine that you never treat the test result, you treat the individual. The wonderful thing about dealing with the adults is they can tell you what's wrong, you take the time to ask the questions, inform the pattern of the illness. And so, that's what I'm going to give to you tonight, broad-based jokes, so that you begin to understand the boundaries of the problem, the range of symptoms that can evolve again, particularly with respect to the nervous system, and in particular, how to approach your health assessment. So Rex mentioned specifically that not everybody will be, not everybody's going to be sick, or if you're sick, the good news is that a significant number of you won't be severely ill. You won't require aortic measures to recuperate, or simply avoidance, perhaps exiting the area, perhaps other measures will be more than adequate. Some of you, unfortunately, will not be able to benefit just in those simple ways, but will require medical intervention, beginning with diagnosis and ultimately, the therapies that are available, and finally, most importantly, to be able to predict the future. So, with those preparatory remarks, let me just move ahead with the slides.
And Dr. Fisk, I was just advised, no one can see you because you're in the dark over here. So why don't we stand in the light, so everyone can see how good-looking your talia is?
That's not why I'm here today, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. So, hydrocarbon access, hydrocarbon is just a medical term for the substances to which you are exposed. Hydrocarbon literally means hydrogen carbonate for carbon, these are essentially the building blocks of the human being. Virtually every major chemical product, every chemical interaction involves molecules which are composed of carbon and hydrogen, with an additional element such as oxygen. The areas that we're going to deal with here in terms of the exposure to these hydrocarbons, obviously, we can see that they take many different forms, most of which are relatively benign because in fact we have control of our exposures. So whether it's paints, or thinners, or gasoline fumes, rubber cement, obviously, we have control of those environments. We don't have control of organic gases, which is our focus tonight. All right, so the issue here is to look at the areas of water that are most commonly involved. Now, again, I'm just going to touch briefly on this subject area, given the fact that I'm focusing mostly on the brain and the nerves. But obviously, the major modes of exposure are going to be inhalation, breathing into the lungs, ingestion, swallowing it, dermal exposure, those are primarily going to be the mechanisms by which we're adversely affected. Dermal exposure means contact with the skin in a chronic irritated state. The organs that are most at risk not only are the nervous system, but obviously, we have the heart in particular, an onus organ once involved, then the liver, kidneys, the skin itself, as well as the blood. One issue which is not quite so obvious, which is where you mentioned, is the point of fact that we actually can swallow a liquid which then vaporizes, and then in that fashion it actually is inhaled into the lungs. Now, most of these chemicals that we're going to be dealing with fall into the category of volatile organic chemicals, the OCs. All that simply means that in the liquid state, they rapidly vaporize and they turn into a gas. I'm going to go over, there are a number of doctors here, I'm going to go over a lot of those, they're rapidly, so the other experts will cover their individual areas. The heart and blood vessel issues, the major obvious issues here are going to be potential for heart attacks, arrhythmias, fainting, those are the symptoms that in particular are potentially adverse consequences of exposure.
Point it, and there you go, point it up to the doctor.
Here we get to the skin areas, and this is going to be essentially just surface exposure. Around the mouth, the lips and the face, and blistering redness in four areas of the And then, this is going to be a list of the gases, or at least potential exposures, that have to be taken into account when you see your individual physicians. The points of recognition of this list is, number one, that the individual chemicals have different impact on various parts of the body, and that doesn't even take into account the fact that what's in disrupt the function of one organ system that predisposes to malfunction of other organ systems, and sometimes, it can be a total crash of the entire range of bodily functions. These gases that are identified from the top, the range of gases are anything from the democratins, which are the gases that you smell, I'm not going to worry too much about the names here. This list is going to be available to you, and the points of this list will be addressed in a second. But some of these chemicals are particularly onus. So for example, benzene is the one drug here, in particular, the one chemical here, that is most likely to produce, among this list, most likely to produce cancer, and that's particularly of the white cells, which are the lymphomas and leukemias. Hexane, which is another common exposure, is the one that's most likely to cause peripheral edema. Perforopathy essentially is going to be a problem which presents with numbness, tingling, frequently weakness and in coordination of the extravasation beginning in the hands of feet, initially immense, gradually ascending, gradually moving closer to the center of the body. Taduane is an omnipresent chemical, it's abundant in many different, many different forms. It is frequently used by misfired adolescents as a form of euphoria inducing, euphoria inducing recklessness, but it is a potential major hazard to the brain. This can result in not only the transient fort state, but ultimately in seizures, coma, and death. So this is a major issue, depending on the period of exposure. I'm going to wrap this up here just quickly, maybe. All right, so the physicians that you might want to consider specifically, depending on your symptoms, usually it's the best idea, first of all, is to write your symptoms down. It sounds like a simple thing to do, but what the doctor's going to be asking you are going to be questions that you should be able to anticipate. The doctor essentially knows, wants to know what the problem is, and then its characteristics, how often, how intense, where, what factors make it better, what factors make it worse. These are common sense questions, but you can anticipate them, and once you have the answers available, it accelerates the process of deduction and leads better to the appropriate testing procedures, diagnosis, and treatment. The physician that you would start with after the internist would depend on the particular organ system that's involved. If you're having breathing difficulties and exacerbation at your ass, you'd see a lung doctor. The point of fact, you're having neurological problems, headaches, nausea, dizziness, numbness, tremors, problems with balance and coordination, you would see a neurologist. Then, beyond that, toxicologists, at the point of fact, could deal with potential for multiple organic and toxic exposures and their interaction. Okay, then let me just finish this way. For many of us, this is, while this is a broad spectrum approach to the range of information you need, it doesn't provide you with the detail that you will absolutely need. Now, many of us here in the audience, in fact, most of us are not MDs, most of us don't have much of the way of precise medical experience, most of us, though, fortunately, have a reasonable educational background. So it's well within your ability to take the time to use the internet, to accumulate knowledgeable sources which will guide you in terms of the questions you should ask yourself, questions you should address in the environment, and information you need to bring to your doctor. Those sources of information include three in particular. The Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, ATSDR, the Environmental Agency specifically, which also is a very detailed list of symptoms and exposures, and then the MSDS, the material safety data issues. All of these sheets, in fact, reflect the information that you will need to understand once the chemical environments have been identified, what your risks are, and that will lead to seeing a physician diagnosing the problem and hopefully, mediating the problem. Thank you. Thank you very much.
The gases in the air can affect the symptoms that you're having, how they cause the headaches, how they correlate to the symptomatology that you're having. So that's one type of doctor that we're going to be hearing from. And then, let's hear from Dr. Anthony Redding. Like I said, Dr. Redding is a clinical psychologist, professor at U C L A. Dr. Redding.
Thank you so much. I'm a psychologist, I'm going to talk to you about factors that promote stress and psychological issues, look at some of the symptoms, or what we see in the context of high levels of stress, and then what we might do about that, hopefully. Okay, so there are various factors we know from research that enhance the effects of adverse events such as this. So these are shown here. The first is uncertainty. We know that in the context of uncertainty, a situation becomes more stressful. Uncertainty here refers to, we don't know when it's going to end, we don't know what's happening, what toxins are in the environment, how it's going to affect us. So we're awash with uncertainty. That's not a good situation. Then the second is we feel out of control. This process we're here tonight is a way of regaining, restoring control. Control is protected in the context of stress. The threat, if it's short term, may or may not have long-term consequences, but certainly where we see extended exposure to stress, then that has the potential to become more debilitating. Then another factor we consider is whether there are opportunities to achieve a sense of safety or sanctuary. Oh, okay, so I don't know if I should start again. Do you want me to start again? As they say, once is enough. Not for everyone. So lack of safety. If the threat is pervasive, it pervades our home, it infiltrates all aspects of our life, then that's why people talk about relocation. On the, where there's an opportunity to achieve a sense of sanctuary or safety, then certainly that mitigates, that reduces the effect of stress. And lastly on this slide, interestingly, factors that are attributed, stressors that are attributed to human error, incompetence, inefficiency, cover-ups, they tend to confer more stress than when we can attribute the cause to our natural consequences. So that's another factor that influences our reaction to adverse events. And then, as we've already heard from Dr. Fisk, the most vulnerable, older, younger, those with prior issues and health problems. Well, we know that there are developmentally sensitive times where not just exposure to toxins have more adverse effects, but also distress. There are studies from Harvard and other research centers showing that stress can have disruptive effects in children and adolescents owing to their development at that time, and the stress coinciding with brain development. And so, there are critical periods of, once again, in terms of effects, there may be immediate effects, and sometimes these effects may be delayed. And that, of course, creates a problem because we are watching and waiting to see if anything transpires. And what this shows also, we can see symptoms that are transient, they may be upsetting at the time, but not have any extended adverse effects. We can see chronic symptoms that continue. And then what I put up there are occult symptoms, which means they may be masked or hidden, they may not be obvious for some time. And very often, stress may happen in that way, where we may not be fully aware of the way it's impacting our body. So these are some changes and symptoms that we tend to see, particularly in children. So behavioral changes, irritability, withdrawal, loss of interest, some of these are particularly for children, depression, fear. Children become clingy, they have separation issues, fears, phobias. Children may regress, so if you see your children returning to prior ways of conducting themselves or emoting, then that would be a sign that the child is under stress. Sleep issues, night terrors, and physical symptoms that in the past might have been irrelevant or insignificant now become significant because those physical symptoms and those bleeding or sinus issues may now take on a different connotation, more sinister connotation, as indicating some ongoing process that's impairing a person's health arising from the understanding of the environmental exposure. These are more serious symptoms where people develop what we call trauma symptoms, and that can certainly occur in the context of an event about which a person feels out of control. They may begin to have recurrent upsetting intrusive thoughts about their health, about the exposure. They become more fearful, they start on the bottom there checking. So what we can see in the context of stress about health, people become more vigilant about health signs, symptoms, changes. And then there's a vicious cycle that can occur where a person then becomes more attentive, and then that becomes the central focus, it's harder to dismiss or put out of a person's mind. And then lastly, what can be done, particularly with children? So the first thing is we identify illicit concerns of children. So it's important to talk to your children through play, to try to elicit if there are issues, and if so, to validate the concerns, to listen to their concerns, to attend to them. And then, to see if we can modify them. Well, what we have here, we have recalibrating risk appraisal, which means we have to address fears of being at risk and try to put that in a broader context. So for example, when we talk about recalibrating risk appraisal, people are probably going on airplanes without any concern, but once there is a plane crash and that is in the news, then suddenly, the risk appraisal will fly if a lot of people change. And the same here. The exposure to the news changes a person's appraisal of risk, and that can then set notion this escalation of alarm and fear. Dealing with uncertainty as best we can, so there are certain things we're uncertain about, but trying, particularly with children, to remind them of those things we are certain about, or the love of our parents, the fact that we're always going to be there. And then opportunities that turn down, what happens under stress is there's a system we all have, the fight or flight response, which is ramped up, it's activated, which in the short term is not a problem. In the longer term, if it's not shut off, is a problem. So we assist children and adults in turning off that level of alarm through relaxation, yoga, reassurance, cuddling with your pet, whatever that may be, to find opportunities on a daily basis to bring down that level of alarm if it's ramped up. And then, just to close, trying to maintain positives in a lifestyle, in spite of the chaos, in spite of disruption, in spite of relocation, trying to establish with the family, and maintaining those routines. And particularly for children, those are going to be very important in taking away some of the pressure and stress that's clearly happening, particularly when they see, and we want to avoid this, parents venting their own concerns. So we have to protect the children from the alarm that adults may be feeling about the child and about themselves. So I'm going to close there. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Dr. Redding. Before we go on with our next medical expert, I was just... Thank you, thank you very much. And thank you guys for coming out once again, I really appreciate it. Nice to see you, Rex, nice to see you as well, thank you very much. And very distinguished panel as well. I wanted to come out, as I have been every single night, every single day, all day long, and let you know, not that I'm just finding for you, but let me just tell you where I came from and why I was late. One of the things I put together recently on your behalf was the Porter Ranch Community Advisory Committee, the Porter Ranch CAC. Now, I will tell you that this goes well beyond Porter Ranch. We've had complaints from as far as Chatsworth, Northridge, and Burnout Hills. Apparently, this plume of toxic chemicals and whatever it might be doesn't know zip codes. So it does keep moving into different locations and different places. So what I put together, one of the biggest failures, quite frankly, from my perspective, one of the many negligent failures of the gas company, has been information and dissemination. Letting you know what's going on, letting you know what's happening with all the experts that are sharing these symptoms, what you can do to improve and take care of yourself and your family. That's the most important thing to me, is the safety of this community, of your family and your loved ones. It's the bottom line. I live in this community, I was born and raised here, my family lives here, and I care deeply about it. So the Porter Ranch CAC that we put together just has its first meeting tonight, in fact, it's ongoing right now. And it is comprised of you guys. And so what this community meeting does, is they're going to be meeting every single week, and I appointed to this, all the HOAs in this community were all appointed to it, and they selected their representatives to sit on it. Both the principals of both schools, Castle Bay, as well as Porter Ranch Community School, their principals were put on this, as well as the superintendent of public instruction for the Northwest Valley was put on this. All four presidents of the neighborhood councils from Porter Ranch, Chatsworth, Northridge, Burnout Hills, were all put on this committee as well. The president of saying Porter Ranch was put on this committee as well. And so, I didn't select individual names, and I didn't politicize it, I selected you to select them who were put on this committee. The gas company has agreed, every single week, without fail, we'll sit down with them, share whatever information is asked. They will share all that information with you. This committee will have its own dedicated website. And so, that's where I just came from. With that, I want to thank you guys for coming out, and I will tell you this, there are a lot of people, particularly right now, this is, there's no good time for this to ever happen. There is no good time for this to ever happen. But it's also happening now during the holidays, which is even worse. I'm getting calls from friends and family members, from people that I've grown up with, and my daughters are best friends with, with all these same symptoms as well. And so I truly am concerned. And we don't know any long-term health effects, we're asking for those studies. I'm not going to rattle off a long laundry list of all the things that I've been doing, you can follow that on your own in the press. But I will tell you this, this is a community that comes together, this is, this community here is truly, and I hate to say this, put this in this terms, but it's been the epicenter of disaster for many major disasters. From the Northridge earthquake to the Chatsworth train accident, I was, by the way, one of the first on-scene deputy. From our annual fires, the Sesnong fires, where I was doing evacuations, I'm also Reserve L A P D officer on the debit sheet, I was up there pulling people out of their homes. I know what that's like. My wife and I lost our first moment of fire. I know what it's like to be displaced. This community though, rebuilds stronger. It's my goal, and I won't sleep until it happens, until we're all safe and we're back in our homes in perpetuity, and this community is safe. I will retire this meeting, you got my commitment on that. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you very, very much. God bless you guys. I know it's going to be hard as I can say this, have a happy and healthy holiday season. It's very hard to say that. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And so Merry Christmas to all of you, Happy New Year. Love you guys, stay in there. You can find me on the internet, contact me anytime, as many of you do, and we'll continue. So let me, I'll ask the question, for you, you're asking me the question, let me just ask the question. Where's the governor?
Yeah.
So I don't know where the governor is. Ultimately, he has not come out publicly at all, with one word. This is the equivalent of the BP oil spill on land in a populated community, and we haven't heard word on from him. We've declared an actual disaster here, an actual disaster, but this community, and he hasn't done anything yet. I will keep asking that every day, I've joined the marches, I've helped the signs, I've sent the letters. I will keep doing that. This is also, so you know, this site isn't even in the city of Los Angeles, it's in the county unincorporated territory. I actually have no regulatory authority over it, but I have the bully pulpit, and I'll keep using it every single day. So with that, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you much, I truly appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman. All right. Dr. Richard King, why don't you come up here and tell us a little bit about the children?
About the symptoms, most of you probably have children who have had symptoms, especially if you go to school. My children go to school here in Porter Ranch, so you know, I have experienced it also. Just go through real quickly, just the differences that you'll experience, and why the children are kind of more adverse, especially the little ones. In terms of physiology, for children, the smaller children have a larger long surface area in proportion to their body's surface area. So even at the same concentrations of whatever's in the air in terms of these pollutants, you can see a child may have a higher concentration proportional to their body size, and you can see even if adults in the same household that may not be having symptoms, it's highly likely that the children will have symptoms at the same concentrations. Some of the other risk factors for children are if you have asthma, obviously, this is inhaled, and it's irritant, so if you have asthma, it can exacerbate asthma symptoms. We're entering the season of respiratory illnesses, pneumonias, viral illnesses that can also be exacerbated by the added-on irritation from the things that are breathed in. Children with skin problems such as eczema or highly sensitive skin, I don't know if, I know with repeated exposures, you can get irritation and rashes, and I know there's been reports of children having rashes, and that's another thing to think about. I think we've talked about, there isn't a lot of data out there about long-term exposure. A lot of data is from short-term or large concentrations of exposure, and because of that, I think, there's two things that we know, we know these effects are dose-dependent, so the more you're exposed, the longer you're exposed, the symptoms are going to be worse. And the second thing is, you can treat the symptoms, but you're not really, you're kind of masking your body's effect of what's going on, and unfortunately, the only real way to kind of get away from the symptoms and kind of be free of them is to really, unfortunately, you have to relocate, you have to get away from the environment, so.
Thank you very much, Dr. King. Dr. Michaels.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's truly a pleasure to be here this evening, and I've come to you not as a geriatrician, because I'm really a family medicine physician who has a lot of special interest in geriatrics and palliative hospice care, and do a lot of internal work. But this is not about me, it's about the people who are all affected, all of you. I'm a resident up here as well, but it was very interesting when I sat and listened to this group this evening, and I heard that the defense is using or capitalizing on the comment that it is all in your head. Let me clarify it a little bit, it's in your head, it's in your ears, it's in your nose, it's in your throat, it's in your chest. So really, from all of that standpoint, I can tell you, thank you very much, that I see most of it as a primary inhalation problem. The people that I've seen that I've taken care of who are actually employees, who have another business work, or one is actually an employee of Toll Brothers who saw me the other day for a physical, and said, I have a lot of mucus congestion and blood that's coming back in the back of my throat, and I know very well with whom he works, and the exposure is an issue. And we're seeing asthma increases, we're seeing people who are using inhalers more often, we're seeing really primarily a lot of respiratory problems. As the other folks have talked to you this evening, excellent presentations, a lot of information, it is dose-dependent. For those of us who do live in this area, if you have a chance to leave, if you're able to leave, if you work outside of the area, or you have a chance to relocate, do it now. I'm telling you, it is really critical. It's more that, it's what we don't know than what we do know. And I think hearing that the litigation is going forward, there's a lot of information that'll be coming out soon about what the chemicals are that's coming out that's so volatile, it's not just the mercaptans, that's the stuff that we can smell, that's the stuff you can relate to. It's noxious, but it's all the other materials. Most of you have probably done a pair or familiar with the fires from about 10 years ago, and know that you can see smoke, you can smell it. years ago, and know that you can see smoke, you can smell it, you know, you leave, and hopefully, those good firefighters and all great concerned citizens take care of us and each other. When you can't see this material unless you have a $100,000 camera that shows you the infrared exposure, or you are saying, you don't see it, you can smell it, but it's unbelievable when you see the quantity that's there that's coming out. That's at the overall picture, and in what I see in the viewer is the effect of that. So, primarily pulmonary, people will bleed from their nose, it's not just a, of course, a pediatric problem, it affects all of us, so, thank you for your attention, I really appreciate speaking.
Smith, he's gonna talk to us a little bit about our pets.
Good evening, I'm a veterinarian who practices in Porter Ranch here, and I've been here since 1993, and I have seen dozens of cases of pets being ill or becoming ill, and I do believe they're related to the exposure to the gas based on the proximity of where they live to the exposure, the higher the gas levels. I've seen dogs, cats, birds, some of the what we call pocket pets, and it's impossible to do a test to say it definitely is related, it's more of a claim to judgment. The primary symptoms I've seen are gastric testing, vomiting primarily. Had one dog who actually had a torsion, I think was related to it, where the stomach flips on itself, not a good thing. We've seen quite a few respiratory problems, particularly cats and birds, birds are very sensitive to respiratory irritants and toxins. And I do agree with the early assessments, the only good solution is treat symptoms and remove the pets from the exposure as much as possible, especially the chronic exposure. Nobody believes, nobody educated believes that chronic exposure to hydrocarbons is a good thing for anyone, these are not things you should be inhaling, and I do believe that in the long run, not everybody's gonna be able to move out of Porter Ranch, they're gonna have to find a way to stop this leak from occurring and probably abandon that field up there, just my not expert opinion. We have seen dermatologic issues as well, some very unusual bacterial infections in dogs, and interestingly enough, one client had a dog had this very unusual bacterial infection on its face, and the client, almost the exact same kind of symptoms, very similar to that, two people in the house did, and their doctor thinks, their physician thinks it's related, and so I tend to think these correlations are real. So, I don't have any scientific backing on this, and I don't think I've looked, and I don't see a lot of real science out there on this chronic exposure, especially among pets, but I would encourage people to remove the pets, if you can, from the chronic exposure, and of course, I think that applies to the people as well, so... But symptoms definitely can be treated, but we can't, I don't think these filtration systems are likely to be all that helpful, although I may be wrong, but I would be very surprised to find that, so, anyway, if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me, and best of luck, have the holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. Kennedy is an environmental lawyer, an activist, widely-read author, and radio show host. He was educated at Harvard University, went to the School of Economics, University of Virginia Law School, received a Master's of Law from Peace University in New York. Did I miss any schools? He's been named as Time Magazine's One of our Heroes of the Planet, and he's a founding partner of the law firm of Kennedy and Madonna. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you all for coming out here on a weekday, excuse my voice, I hope it'll get a little bit better. As I speak, and I, and I'm gonna be brief, but I wanna thank all the doctors and the attorneys who came here tonight to explain some of these issues to you. I'm gonna explain a little bit about my background, I've been practicing environmental law for 34 years, I teach at a litigation clinic at Rice University Law School in Lake Plains, New York. My students, I actually have a practice order that allows them to practice law under my supervision. So, I give each of those students four polluters to sue, and the speculators, they file complaints, they do discovery, they do depositions, they go to court, and they argue their cases, and they don't win the case, they don't pass the course, and we brought a recent polluter on Hudson River. I started my career working for fishermen on the Hudson River, and we've brought over 500 successful lawsuits mainly to clean up the Hudson River. We forced polluters to spend over $5 million remedied in the Hudson. And today, largely as a result of our work, the Hudson is the richest waterway, this was a river that when I started work on it, it was a national joke, it was dead water for 20-mile stretches north of New York City, south of Albany, it caught fire, turned color. Today, it is the richest waterway in the North Atlantic, it produces more pounds of fish per acre, more biomass per gallon than in any other waterway in the Atlantic Ocean north of the equator, and it's the last major river system left in the entire North Atlantic. It still has strong spawning stocks of all its historical species of migratory fish. The miraculous resurrection of the Hudson has inspired the creation of river keepers, now 270 river keepers, we each have a patrol boat, we each have a full-time paid waterkeeper. They patrol their local waterways, they track down polluters, they litigate against them. We have one on Santa Monica Bay, San Diego Bay, the Orange County Coast, and the Santa Barbara Channel. We have a picket line of patrol boats up and down the coast. I'm telling you all this because most of the cases I bring are public interest cases, and I feel very lucky to be able to do that. Most of the environmental laws that we have in this country have citizen-provisioned in them that says, "When the government fails to enforce the law against a polluter who's breaking that law, any citizen can step in the shoes of the United States Attorney and prosecute that polluter for penalties and for infringement relief." In those cases, the attorneys don't make money, these are not, they make, they get their fees paid on an hourly basis, but they're not what attorneys would call big-money cases. And I feel very fortunate that I don't need to make that money, and that I'm able to engage in these battles that I love, and that I believe are gonna leave the world a better place. Oh, I'm fighting, these are the cases that I'm talking about. Now, and I live in New York, but two years ago, I married a California girl, you may know her, her name is Cheryl Hines, and she's an actress from, was on Kevlar Enthusiast and a number of other shows, but I moved to be with her, I moved to Los Angeles. I live 34 miles from where we are right now. I didn't intend to get in a big, a lot of big fistfights when I came here to California, wanted to live peacefully. I have friends, two of my closest friends in the world, Klaus von Heider and Jamie, were sitting right over here, who live in Chatsworth, and whose homes were affected by this. And I got calls from many, many attorneys when this happened, who asked me, "Would you be involved?" Because I've been involved in almost all of the big hydrocarbon oil cases over the past 20 years in this country. I'm involved to this day in the BP case, which now were profoundly settling, I was involved in streaming Exxon up in Alaska. If you think I was involved, if you think of a major oil spill in this country, I've been involved in it, and also the other big polluter cases. And I also have, in addition to teaching, and being the environmental litigator for the waterkeeper movement, and for many of the individual waterkeepers, and I also have a law firm, which you'll see up here, it's called Kennedy Madonna. We often time to partner with many of these other large law firms, we've heard of who do, who specialize in class action cases. In class action cases, the lawyers do make a lot of money, and they bring in a lot of money for their clients, and they spend a lot of money trying to win those cases. In some cases, the lawyers are going up against very, very powerful entities like Southern California can ask, and they may have to put up five or 10 or $20 million, and if they lose that case, they lose the money, they're doing it on contingency. So, the clients don't lose the money. But I got phone calls from many, many attorneys who asked me to help them on these cases. Because I'm not interested in money, I went with, and there are many, many law firms here, and I've worked with almost all of them, and you will hear, see their advertising, and you'll meet them, and you'll hear from them, and they're all competent, or most of them, almost both of them are competent, most of them are very, very good, and they're gonna get you good settlement. But I wanted to go with the people that I thought were best for this particular case, and I also made one of the conditions that whatever firm that I got involved with had to charge the lowest fees, because I want to make sure that when we win this case, that the majority of the money goes to the clients, and goes to the rest of the law. I ended up helping to put together a team that I believe includes the best attorneys suing for this particular case. One of those is Rex Paris, Rex is part of this team, because he has more experience than anybody in this state is suing the oil industry and the gas industry, particularly over well injections. He spent the last two years drinking a RICO case, which is a hybrid case, it's half criminal, half civil, against the gas companies in Southern California, because virtually every injection well in this state is being operated illegally, and it's being operated in cahoots with the government officials who are supposed to be regulating the gas industry. The principal agency, which is called DOGAR, which stands for Division of Oil and Gas, which gives them more resources, is a poster child for what we call captive agency phenomena. This is an agency that becomes captured by the industry that is supposed to regulate. So, you think that DOGAR is protecting the public, but oftentimes, DOGAR sees its own role as a sock puppet for the oil and gas industry that is supposed to regulate. So, instead of protecting the rest of us, it ends up protecting that industry, and their pronouncements cannot be trusted. And what you see is whenever you see large-scale environmental entry of the kind that we see here, you'll also see the subversion of democracy, you'll see the disappearance of transparency, which is the, which is the keystone of democracy. And it becomes hard figuring out, asking questions, you know, I asked, the first question I asked about this is, "Why aren't they building, why aren't they flaring this gas?" Right? Why aren't they flaring the gas? Now, there may be a really good reason that they're not flaring the gas, but if you look at these videos that we made that show the gas pouring down on these communities, you know, my first reaction is, "Why don't they hook up some pipes, bring that gas?" That well blew up, it blew up at 9,000 feet deep, it's just like the BP oil spill, and the gas is now going down to the bottom and coming back up, and then, and going through the bore hole and coming out, and, you know, getting into our communities. Oh, they plugged the top of that well, but it's not stopping the gas from coming up. So, maybe one of the engineering solutions that occurred to me from having seen these problems before is you hook a quarter-mile pipe up to the top of that well, and you unplug it, and bring it up to a ridge line far away from the public, and begin flaring it to reduce the pressure down below and suck the gas up. So, I'm not an engineer, I'm a lawyer, I don't know anything about this except what I've seen in the past, but I ought to be able to ask somebody that question and get a straight answer. If you try doing that, you can't get that kind of answer, because what they're doing is operating in secret, they're talking to each other, but they're not talking to us, they're not keeping us informed, they're telling us things that we know, you know, are not true. They say, "Well, you know, it's methane gas coming out of here," and methane gas doesn't purge it. Well, it's 25% of the methane gas in the entire state. We have carried around all over in Paris, France, talking about how great the state of California is on global warming. And yet, 25% of the methane gas, which is 84 times as efficient at trapping heat and carbon, is coming out of a single well that he hasn't even come down here to visit. You know, I'm a Democrat, I'm a Democrat, but yeah, as far as I'm concerned, there's no such state as Democratic children or Republican children. If you're feeling something wrong, it's wrong whether you're Republican or Democrat. And we deserve the truth. Oh, you know, and we know this, I know this, if you've got a methane leak, it's not just methane that's coming out of that hole, there's benzene, and ethyl benzene, which is extremely carcinogenic. How do I know this? Because I'm a senior attorney for NRC, which is the biggest environmental group in the country, and we wrote the laws that made the gasoline companies put the benzene capture, capture, captures on the gas tanks. But you know, when you were younger and you wanted to fill up your car with gas, you took the handle off, you put it in your car, there wasn't that kind of cup thing there is on it now. We made them put that cup on it because that captures the benzene, because the people who work in the gas stations were getting enormous exposures to benzene because they were around it all the time, and benzene, not only is it carcinogenic, but it bioaccumulates. That means every time you breathe benzene, it stays in your body, and it's, some of it stays with you for the rest of your life. And every molecule that gets in you is toxic and is carcinogenic, and the more you get, the more likely are you're gonna get cancer. So, all of us get a little tiny bit of benzene every time we fill up our car, and that's just a little part of our mind, but you don't wanna be breathing that stuff all night long. Well, if you live in Chatsworth, or if you live in Portland, Porter Ranch, you're breathing that stuff all night long, because it's not just the methane that's coming out, it's benzene, it's ethyl benzene, it's toluene, it's cylen, which are carcinogenic and mutagenic, which means they cause birth defects, they cause, and they cause miscarriages, it's radon, which is extremely carcinogenic. Most of the case of lung cancer in this country in people who don't smoke cigarettes comes from radon. Wherever you see methane, you're also gonna see radon. Well, do you think they've even measured for radon? Do you think they have? I don't know, because nobody told me, because they're not being straight with us. This is what the government is supposed to do, is supposed to tell you, "Here's what we're finding." You know, the people who live in this community were smelling something horrible, smelled like rotten eggs. The gas company said, "Oh, don't worry, that's just mercaptans." Well, mercaptans are bad, so you shouldn't worry about it. But then we started doing measuring ourselves, my group of lawyers, and we found out that it's not just mercaptans, it's sulfides, and sulfides can be really dangerous, this is hydrogen sulfide and sulfur dioxide, and it smells like rotten eggs too, and usually it's not associated with gas, it's usually associated with oil. But, in this storage area, which is two miles deep, was not a former gas well, it was a former oil dump. So, maybe that hydrogen sulfide, that sulfur dioxide is not really mercaptans, maybe there are sulfides that are coming out from that former oil well. And hydrogen sulfide is really dangerous, it causes brain damage, it causes kidney damage, it causes liver damage... It causes brain damage, it causes kidney damage, it causes liver damage. It can kill you if there's enough of it. It's the most dangerous gas that is associated with hydrogen carbon monoxide activities and drilling activities. We have a right to know whether we're breathing mercaptains or whether we're breathing hydrogen sulfide. Why don't we know that? It's because the government is in cahoots with the oil companies. I incident that, you know, I've seen, I've been involved in hundreds and hundreds of lawsuits. I've been involved in some of the worst environmental disasters in our country over the past 30 years. It is very rare to see what you see in this case, which is children who are actually hurt and hurt instantaneously. As soon as I heard about this, I went, I picked up an engineer who was a former employee of Dogger. And I picked up a realtor who's an employee of one of the biggest real estate firms in this country, very reactive in this area. And I said, let's go for a drive. And we went out, and we drove through these neighborhoods. We drove through Porter Ranch and States. And we drove all around, and I kept jumping out of the car whenever I saw somebody walking on the street and talking to people. And that day, I couldn't find a single person who did not, who was not directly affected or who did not have somebody in their family who was affected. And these people had. I talked to a Korean lady who was wearing a mask on her face. She spoke very little English. And I said to her, do you smell the gas? And she said, yes, I'm vomiting, vomiting, vomiting. I talked to two kids, a 16-year-old kid who was driving a car and his sister. They said that their brother has nosebleeds, their little brother has nosebleeds all the time. We talked to people who had asthma, people who had rashes, people who were dizzy, people who were vomiting, had nausea, had stomach pains, pulmonary issues, or having difficulty breathing. You don't see this in normal environmental crises. Usually, there's a latency period, so you know people were exposed, and you want to get them medical monitoring. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to make sure that people who now have been exposed to these illnesses, that they get free medical monitoring for the rest of their lives, as they are entitled to. But in the meantime, in the meantime, why are these people still living there? There's 2,000 people in those communities who want to move. My friends Klaus and Jamie have the wherewithal to move, so they got out of their house. And they moved to a nearby house. They moved to a house over in Malibu. Many of the people who live there don't have the wherewithal to do that. So if this were a normal natural disaster or a human-made disaster, you'd see the governor coming with a big, a group of, you know, of news people, and he'd be touring the neighborhood, and he'd be talking to people, and he'd say, let's get these people out of here, and let's get them housing that is comparable to the housing that they're leaving, and let's make it as easy for them as possible. And let's make it easy for them, for their children, to leave that school and go to a comparable school as convenient for them without getting any kind of penalty. And let's make all this stuff happen, and let's make it happen yesterday. That's what you would normally see. The reason we brought a class action suit, because a class action suit is not suitable for getting all of you people compensated for the losses that you're going to suffer, the property losses, the health losses. A class action, because all of your losses are going to be different. They're going to be unique. You don't want to do a class action. But we brought a class action to get jurisdiction, so we can get injunction to relief, and we can demand immediately from the governor. And tell the governor, you come down here and fix this problem and treat it like the catastrophe that it is. No, I don't want to think ill of people. I don't want to question, why is Governor Brown not down here? But I know this, that this company gave $500,000 to Republican and Democratic politicians in this state last year, and $30,000 to the governor. And all of these politicians seem to have blind spots when it comes to disasters like this one. I like Jerry Brown. Jerry Brown is very good on most of my issues, but he does have a blind spot when it comes to oil companies. And his sister sits on the board of the parent company and is at fault here. So we have to, you know, in this case, and I'm not saying that there's corruption, but what I'm saying is that there's an appearance of something that smells like hydrogen sulfide. The government, we cannot trust the government to protect us. This is a fistfight, and we need, you're going to need the lawyers, and you're going to need the lawyers to do this right and to make sure that you get your compensation. And one of the things that I did, I went and drove through these neighborhoods. And I was with, as I said, I was with an engineer. And the engineer said, who used to work for Dogger? And the engineer said, you know what the problem is? That well, that blue, is 62, it was built in 1954. That's the year I was born. And I can tell you, things fall apart in 62 years. And back then, if they had just waited 20 years, until 1974, they passed the Clean and, or the Safe Drinking Water Act. And the Safe Drinking Water Act says you can't build a storage injection well unless it has a concrete casing from the well ahead from the top all the way down to the top of the dome. So this well is two miles deep, 9,000 feet, and for at least a mile, there's no concrete casing. It's just a seven-inch metal tube going through a big bore hole in the ground. So they knew it was going to break. Of course, it's going to break. The only question is how, okay, it's rusting. And the oxidation that takes place in those well holes is accelerating by the gases. And the acids, and the acids. So we know it's going to break soon. The only question is, when is it going to break? They knew it was going to break. It's a time bomb sitting below the ground. Why wouldn't they prepare for this? And guess what? There's 92 other wells that are exactly the same, and they have the same problem. Now, I have a friend who just bought a house and sold his house in Texas. And in Texas, they have a rule that if somebody has ever seen a ghost in your house, you have to report that to the buyer. He had a ghost in his house. And the buyer said he didn't report it, and sued him, and he had to give the money back. In the state of California, if you're somebody who died in your house, you have to report that to the buyer, or they can revoke the contract. Because the oil company is so powerful, it doesn't have to report that it's got 92 wells where all in violation of the law, 100 feet from your house, and every one of them is going to fail. When we looked at this, the realtor who was with us in the car said, she said, holy cow, but she didn't say cow. She said, this is like that movie, Poltergeist, you know? Where they didn't tell everybody that they put the housing development on top of the graveyard, and the ghost started coming out of the ground. Well, that's what's happening here. That well is 9,000 feet deep, and the valve that broke is 9,000 feet, and the well is leaking at 9,000 feet. And a lot of that gas is coming up through the bore hole, but not all of it. A lot of it is just going through the ground, two miles deep, and then it's percolating upward. And it's coming up through your basements, and it's coming up through your living rooms and through your nurseries, and percolating up through your house. That's what's happening. And if it hits an aquifer on the way up, it's poisoning that aquifer with benzene and toluene and cylen and ethyl benzene and all of these other contaminants. And the aquifer is then carrying it other places where we don't know, and spreading it around and dispersing it so it's coming up. Well, now that we know that, what do you think the value of your house is? Would you have paid for that house at value if you knew that that gas leak was bound to happen under your house? The realtor said, how many people here were told by their realtor that there was a field of injection wells, nine injection wells less than a half mile from your house? How many people?
None of us.
Okay, none of you. Well, do you, how many people think somebody should have told you that? So here's what the realtor said to me. She said, this is a, what we call in our business, a default desert. And she said, here's what is going to happen. There's people in this community who paid $1.2 million for their house. They brought $800,000 from the bank to get that house. The house is now worth $500,000 tops, and it's going to go to the speculators, the vultures, who come in and wake them up with the hope that they don't get cleaned up someday. But once one house is sold for $500,000, and every house in the area is worth no more than $500,000. Oh, many of those houses are underwater now. And the people, and you know, even if you want to stay in that neighborhood, your house is no longer ever going to be worth what it was worth when you paid for it because they lied to you. So the question is... The question is, you know, clearly, there's a theory that all of you have to be reimbursed. And you all ought to get as much money as you can from that reimbursement. All the attorneys, you know, all the different law firms who are soliciting you are going to get you the money. What I've told my partners is, I'm not going to be involved with you unless you're the lowest-priced law firm. I already know you're the best. The other, Brian Panish, who's not here tonight, is regarded around the country as probably one of the best child lawyers, if not the best in the country. He got a $4.9 billion judgment, the biggest judgment in the history of California, from one person. He is repeated when he sued Southern California Gas and got multimillion-dollar judgments for one person. And he, I made sure that he is a partner in this case. The other partner that I have, John Morgan, who is, who has the biggest law firm in the country and was the leader in the BP case, which I'm one of the attorneys on. So we have Rex, who is the best oil and gas guy in the state. We have Brian Panish, and we have John Morgan, and we have a crew of really great attorneys here, and they've all made the personal commitments made. They're going to have the lowest cost of any attorney, of any of the major firms that are coming in here and soliciting in this case. Oh, and that's what I'm worried about. First, I'm worried about one thing, my first thing, my reputation. And, you know, two years from now, you guys make your settlement, and I can walk through this neighborhood, and all of you are going to be patting me on the back and giving me a hug. So I don't care about the money. I want to make sure that you get the biggest settlements, and I want to make sure that this gas leak is stopped, that your children are protected, that public health is protected. And I'm going to be part of this lawsuit from now till the end of it. I'm getting a pro-hack fee admittance in this case, that I can sit at the table, and that I can argue this lawsuit. And these guys are all letting it. They're not the kind of people who come in and they're very good at settling cases, but if the case doesn't settle, it's hard to get them on the telephone. These are people who are going to answer your telephone calls. Oh, and I'm going to be there, and I'm going to argue this case in front of the judge, and it's right next to my home, and it's, maybe somebody is, like, somebody picked a fight late, and they came after Klaus and Jamie, and they're my friends, and I feel like it's my job to be part of this fistfight. And I look forward to working with you all, and, you know, whoever you sign with to work to make sure that we get justice for this community. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I expect I'll see a lot of you over the next year or two, and I think that's, I've taken up enough of your time. Thank you all.
Patricia Oliver. Patricia has been working night and day on this, and she has actually made some great progress in regards to those of you who have a mortgage, if you want to listen to this. Patricia, by the way, Patricia knows more about oil and gas than I ever could hope to. She is the one who's really been behind the scenes pushing this tirelessly. And it's, you know, we always take credit for what the women do, don't we?
I don't mean to interrupt, Patricia. Part of my deal in moving out to California is that I commute for two days a week to teach my course in pace and do dry cases in New York. And I have a flight tonight from LAX, and I'm rushing to catch it. Oh, I don't want to, I don't want people to think I'm rude. For leaving, I urge you to stay and listen to what everybody says, and I want to thank you again for coming out here and spending your time.
While you are here, I wanted to just briefly update you on some of the things that are developing on the relocation front. I think you probably know that things have slowed down, if not completely halted, if you're trying to relocate right now, and you haven't already. We learned about this problem last week from one of our clients because they had a very ill two-and-a-half-year-old, and we thought, what can we do? We've got to make things happen now. Now, one of the most important lessons I've learned in my life is when there's a problem, you need a captain. And you need a captain in your own home. And I want everyone to understand that you are captains of your ship. Now, that doesn't mean you like the water you're on every day, right? Captain sometimes has rough seas. And what do you do? You back down the hatches, and you keep your crew with their morale high, and you steer that ship into a safe harbor. And I expect you all to do that. Now, the first way we decided to try to figure out how to do that was trying to reach out to mortgage companies, because we understand that if you're told, well, we might be able to relocate each hotel in three weeks, that doesn't save your family. So we reached out, and we were able to get Wells Fargo to commit, to be the first mortgage company to commit, that if you are relocating and you are in good standing with your mortgage, you can defer the payments while you're relocating. It will not impact your credit, okay? But this is being done, and they're going to be announcing it soon, but it's in order to give you the financial freedom to make the decisions to get your ship into the harbor you want to be safe for your family. And if there is any lesson the people of Porter Ranch have taught me, is that you lead your families to safety. Is that right? How many captains are out here? I want to know, right? We expect you to be captains. Now, the other thing we've been doing is we understand, by, you know, how long is it?
Wait a minute, before you go on. You have to call the number. It's not automatic. You have to call Wells Fargo, and they work with you on this and put you on the list. If you don't call, you're not going to be able to benefit from it.
Correct. And we are hoping to make this type of, this department available to all of our clients with their mortgage companies, because we want you to be captains. Now, how do you find a new place? That's where we've started putting together a list of realtors who can help you and find a new place when you are stuck, and to help in that process of looking for a place. Because again, we recognize we have parents working, we have parents raising children, and you have the holidays. So trying to find a place to go is not easy. So we've been working with our clients, finding realtors. Brian and Christine Katz are two of the... Brian and Christine Katz are two of the, are the family that we've been helping, that is the first test case to see what would happen, because we said, look, work with a Realtor, start leading your own ship, and see what you can do to find a new place. So we've been working very tirelessly to make that happen. They should be moving this weekend. Now, in the process of trying to find a new place, we recognize that there is a problem called price gouging, meaning that suddenly rent that was 3,000 is now 6,000. Now, here's where you come in, again, captains. The governor of California can declare a state of emergency and start preventing price gouging. How many people want to prevent price gouging? Okay, so that's an important part of you as a captain of your ship, to make sure you are not stuck in a situation where you're having price gouging. We can't prevent that alone. That's got to be us and working together to make that happen. Now, Brian and Christine are here. Let me just have a quick statement from them about what they went through. I know you wanna go, you can talk to them afterwards, but I just spent the day with Christine. I think she's seen me about three times, four times in the last week. So, here's Christine and Brian Katz.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. It was a struggle. It wasn't for Patricia and Robert, who honestly have treated us like family, and a bunch of the attorneys that we've signed up with, they're family. If it wasn't for them, and especially Danielle, we would still be looking for a place. And even now, we started this in November, and we are hopefully praying that we get the keys this weekend. So it was a struggle, and thank goodness, hopefully we'll have a home and get this all resolved.
So, just reiterate, if you have questions, you wanna know, you can talk to Brian and Christine up here. We are here to help you be a captain of your ship.
Okay, thank you so much, Patricia. Before we open it up, Brian, good to see you. Good to see you. Before we open it up for some questions and answers, I just wanna introduce real quick Alex Nagy from the Food and Water Watch, also Safe Porter Ranch. She's a big advocate. She's here to talk to you a little bit about what they're doing. Alex.
Hey, everyone. So my name is Alex Nagy. I'm representing Safe Porter Ranch and Food and Water Watch tonight. How many of you have heard of Safe Porter Ranch? That's amazing, that's great. We were on the round since day one, calling neighbors, holding meetings, going door-to-door, hosting protests outside the gas company gate to say, you can't ignore this situation anymore, you have to be accountable to us. We were successful in getting our elected officials involved. All of our campaigning and exposing them are captain was what eventually pushed the LA County Department of Public Health to issue that relocation order. And that is the power of grassroots organizing, that is the power of people working together to make change. So, next up, now that we have the lawyers involved and they're taking care of you right now, we're campaigning to shut that facility down. And there are three reasons why, right? Three reasons. The first is that facility is too old and too dangerous. On average, the wells are 52 years old, with many over 80 years old. And SoCal Gas themselves, they admit they've seen a negative well integrity trend at their facility. They are reacting every year to well casing failures, grade one. They reported on it 2008. They stopped two in 2013. By the way, they did cause the fire, the 2008 Cincinnati Fire. So they've been a bad actor, they've been a bad neighbor, and this for them is just the cost of doing business. You relocating is just the cost of doing business. The second reason is that we know, as Robert Kennedy said, our regulators are captured. Our government officials are captured by the oil and gas industry. This is the most powerful corporation in the world, the oil and gas industry. They wanna maintain their entrenched interests in having you maintain, you know, your addiction to fossil fuels, right? And so, any regulation that we pass, they fight every, us every step of the way to make sure that it's good enough for them, which means our regulators never enforce it, which means regulations, just adding them on, isn't really gonna help us. The only solution here is to shut it down, because if our regulators can't be held accountable to us, and if our government can't be held accountable to us, then let's shut it down. The third reason is we have the solutions to transition for a better future. We have the technology today to go 100% real clean energy in Los Angeles, and we can do it, but we need people on the ground demanding it. We need to continue to raise our voice and say, we can transition off of natural gas. Not tomorrow, not today, but we can do it, and we have to demand that our leaders come up with a plan. And so, all of that to say is, please get involved with us at Food and Water Watch, at Safe Porter Ranch. We need to build the people power to take on the corporate power, the people who have taken over our democracy and destroyed our lives. We can do this if we continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What I wanna do it this time is we have a microphone right here. If anyone has any questions, please stand up to the microphone, you can form a line here. And just to be clear, we will stay here as long as you need us to, and you can ask questions of lawyers and to the doctors. So, looks like we have a line forming already. It's good to see. Sir, step up to the plate.
Well, good evening. My name is Joe. My wife and I moved here about four months ago. It's a little disheartening to know that this is happening. We have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter. To be honest, I didn't find out about what's happening until about last week. My wife was speaking about this, and I'd written to pay attention. She sent me a link, and I saw that video that, you know, with the gas leak and whatnot, and it's just, it's very scary. I do have a few questions. One of my questions is, these toxins, how can they ever fully be cleaned? Can we honestly say that they can be written up? You know, another is the adverse effects on the children. You know, we're talking about birth defects and stuff like that. We were actually gonna try for another child, and now we're really scared, you know, what can happen? I don't know. We don't know how long we've been exposed to this. It's just, it's, it's a scary thing. You were also talking about studies being conducted. Who exactly will be conducting these studies? Will it be somebody on the SoCal side? Will it be somebody you guys hire? Those are just some of my concerns. I'm sure there's many others.
Let's start with the children, not question. Dr. Kay, do you wanna address that?
So again, there's really, unfortunately, we're probably gonna be the test case. There's no data out there about long-term repeated exposures to these toxins. If any of the study, a lot of the studies are with mercantiles, and at least there's actually no evidence to show that there's any birth defects associated with mercantiles or cancer, but those are with short-term, again, short-term high concentration exposures, for example, in a facility or at the facility or in terms of long-term exposure, there's no way to tell. And you said you have a two-and-a-half-year-old. Unfortunately, she probably, at that age, may be able to tell you symptoms, but for the most part, she probably, even if she does experience symptoms, she may not be, she may not be able to tell you. So, little cues, like if she's tired, or she's irritable, like some of the other physicians were saying, is probably a sign that she probably is feeling the effects of it, and that's all the more important reason to, if you're very able to relocate, to get out of the areas as possible.
Thank you, doctor. And sir, you said Jason, correct?
What was it?
What's your name?
Joe.
Joe, I'm sorry, Joe. You talked about the studies, who's gonna be conducting them?
We're.
We're gonna be conducting them. We're under the process of hiring the best experts in the world to do that. And now that we're in litigation, you know, we wanna do some studies next to the canyon, next to the well. In order to do that though, because it's the gas company's property, we're gonna have to go to court and get a order, allowing us to go put those monitors next to the well and next to all the wells that are up there. So, once the case gets going, that's what we're gonna start doing, and we're gonna make that information public and available to all the people, so you know exactly what's going on.
Okay. And I did have one more question I thought was, the whole relocation thing, how do you go about doing that, or, you know, the whole process? I know you talked about relocating, but how do you, how does one start that whole process?
You can file a claim request with SoCal Gas. They have a home reference center here in the, near the Whole Foods Market. The problem is, they'll tell you that it's gonna take three weeks to find a place. So I've generally been advising people to start finding something now, and then go back and see, tell SoCal Gas what you found, and get their blessing on the cost, so that you can move right away.
Okay.
But, but if you talk to them, they will probably tell you three weeks away.
Three weeks away.
And so that's what I'm saying, you gotta be captain to take care of your own family.
Right, I understand.
Now, the people we're representing have a team that just is doing that.
Okay.
Just trying to relocate people. We've also arranged that when Southern California Gas just calls back, the congressman's office will make the call for us. So we're pushing them to relocate as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I was actually being last, you can get to ask me questions, I have a few. I was wondering if we have an estimated radius as to the areas affected? We are just at Chatsworth and Wober, and we're about a mile south of here. We're not smelling it, but I'm wondering if we're being affected by it, or if we know if we're being affected by it? Also, I know there were several references to water being affected, the aquifers being affected. What should we be doing in terms of making sure we're doing clean water, just bottled water, water filtration systems? And also, if and when the facility is closed, do we know, do we have an idea of whether property values will come back to where they were at, or what's gonna happen?
So you have three questions?
Yes.
Okay, one is, gas does not follow zip codes. It goes where the wind blows. If you're having symptoms and you're smelling black gas, you're affected, you're part of this.
And we're not.
If you're not smelling gas and you're not having symptoms, then you're not?
We're not.
Then you're safe. Okay? And your body will tell you if you're, if you're being affected. Listen to it. The water, we, we don't know the answer to that. Right? What was this, third one?
If and when the facility is closed, will the property values come back to where they were at?
The research so far, based upon what's happened in other areas, it will not rebound completely. The problem with this is it's unique, because the problem still is there. You know, the bomb's still there, now everybody knows it. So the answer to that, it's going to be depressed, but the emraisers down the road are gonna have to tell us how much.
Hello, my name is Julie Cornstein. I was a member of the Los Angeles Board of Education for many years, I'm retired now, but no one mentioned tonight, and it actually happened today at the Board of Education, that there was unanimous vote to close the two schools, Porter Ranch Community, Porter Valley Community School and Castle May Lane. I don't think that they've given yet the information about which schools the students will go to, but I, my understanding is that all of Porter Valley Community School will be kept together, and Castle May Lane will be kept together, two separate schools, but I don't have further information, but I thought that was really important to have mentioned that tonight.
Mentioned, when they're, they're mentioning.
I did, I heard him say it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're right, they have closed the two schools, they are gonna try to...
They haven't been closed yet, the students are just getting ready now to go out for the winter break.
And I think they were waiting, I think they were waiting for that. They were, you know, they're writing for the Christmas break, it made sense. It makes sense to me, but it makes sense to some people. But we all know one thing, they're not gonna close those schools unless the threat is serious and recognized. I mean, they, they don't just do that on a whim. The fact that the school districts have recognized this is a serious health threat means it's a serious health threat for everyone.
Thank you very much.
And I think they have said that the kids that go to that Porter Ranch Community School will be going to Northridge Middle School, and Castle May would be going to...
I didn't want to make it public, because it hasn't been public yet, so...
I can just...
Good evening. I had several questions, but I'll cut it down, because there's a long line of people who would like to ask their question. First of all, how realistic is it that the Aliso Canyon facility can't really be shut down permanently, considering its existing infrastructure and how much money's at play for the company? That's one. And let me mention the second one as well. Wells property values go down as the, earlier we heard, and well so few people decide to move permanently, put their houses on sale, for sale, and they glut on the market of sale, homes for sale, because that plant isn't going anywhere. The infrastructure that is deteriorated, 60 years old, isn't gonna be replaced in a few months. How is that equity going to be recovered? How many years is it just gonna take? Let's, let's, let's kinda pace ourselves, give us an idea, how many year battle is this we're looking at, please?
Thank you. You know, I think the only bellwether we have is the BP disaster. And the BP disaster is now coming to a conclusion. How long has that been? Anybody remember?
Five years.
I don't think it was five, I think it was more like three, probably. About three years. This is not gonna be solved overnight. There is nothing about this problem that, that is attractive, there, it's nothing but downside, it's, but what we're attempting to do is minimize the downside. The other question you have is the, are the property values gonna come back? No, let's face it, they're not. Can they close that facility? Yes, there's no reason they can't close that facility. It may take some time, but there is no reason in the world to close San Onofre down, because San Onofre was a danger. How is this not a danger? You know, and it's not going to get better. There are 90-man wells, injection wells there, and that does not count the extraction wells that they didn't remediate. This was just bad planning. Now, they have a choice, they can keep it, but they'll have to buy out the entire area. Things of this, this size have happened before. It's, it's not impossible at all.
Thank you. With respect to our kids, some of their symptoms or problems haven't materialized, and it might come down the road 10, 15, 20 years down the road. Doctors, you know this. How is something like this addressed? Is this something we'll be mentioning to the participants?
The individual lawsuits we're filing include a cause of action for medical monitoring for life. You know, they caused it, they should be monitoring the situation, okay?
Just another point on the duration of how, how long we can expect these things to take. I think it's important for everyone to know, because everyone has these questions, that California, our courts are already congested as it is. Courts are closing, we have limited resources, and judges are scarce, and courtrooms literally aren't closing now, especially in LA County. So that's just going to delay the process inevitably. And so, in a big case like this, as Rex said, it's gonna take a while. But when you add to that the fact that it's just congested as hell in LA County to get a case out for trial, instead of, it's, it's, it's gonna be a problem. So, you know, we ask for your patience, and that's why we file the lawsuits as quickly as we can, so that we can get the ball rolling on.
My name is Mark, and this is for the doctor at UCLA. Us patients that go to UCLA at Porter Ranch, if we relocate to the west side, will we be able to see doctors in the west wing?
I've got a few UCLA doctors. Yeah, take it, yeah.
I'm a cancer survivor, I've been treated up here. So if we relocate to the west side, will we be able to see doctors there?
Yes, most definitely, if you're in the area. I've seen everybody, if you want to see the doctors there, of course.
Okay, so is UCLA doing anything yet?
Not other than providing general care.
Okay, thank you.
You know what, I apologize, I just got word that we need to close the sanctuary. They need us to wrap this up. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna relocate to the lobby, we already have lawyers and staff there, we're gonna answer your questions out there. I apologize, sir, it looks like you...
For informing us, this is my first meeting here, and certainly, Mr. Robert F. Kennedy. Myself, I'm asthmatic, I have been having difficulty with my breathing. I believe as a result of the gas that's being admitted of Chatsworth resident, my eyes are burning as we speak, and I'm hoping that we can get this resolved as soon as possible, and that the monitoring can immediately be taken, that there be punitive damages certainly, and getting the court to realize, which they probably won't have difficulty in realizing the severity of this. Once again, thank you. And also, my one question is, is there any... And also, my one question is, is there any threat or possibility of ignition or detonation to these wells?
The fact that the FAA said that they can't fly below 2,000 feet because they were afraid it would ignite. They're not drilling during the, and at night. Can't, can't fly under 2,000 feet anytime, because it might ignite. And they're not drilling at nighttime, because the lights that we need to, to see with are run by generators, and that could ignite it. So, yeah, they're really concerned about that they ignited. And there's any doubt about that?
We'll take the rest of your questions in the lobby. Thank you all so much for being here. Look forward to chatting with you.
Yeah, we just gotta get him to turn the heat on.